I'd like to call the July 25th, 2011 Regular Meeting of the Franklin Water Commission's Order. Would you please stand while we have the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, B.C. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Wilder?
Here.
Mr. Hayden?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. May?
Here.
Mayor Graham?
We're all President County for. The first item on the business is the approval of minutes. You have in your packet the June 20th, 2011 Work Session, June 27th, 2011 Regular Meeting, July 11th, 2011 Special Meeting, July 11th, 2011 Work Session. We've had a chance to review these. Do I have a motion regarding the approval of these minutes? You got a motion?
Mayor, I'll motion that we dispense with the reading of the minutes and approve them as presented.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Okay. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, so the minutes are approved. Next on the item was ceremonial items. And so we'll turn this over to our City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We have several retirements at this time of year. And at first, I'd like to ask Chief Willhort if he would come forward. I think it's notable that the loyal staff, people who are retiring today represent 216 years and 11 months of service.
Well, I feel like I'm cutting my right arm and my left arm off here. So we'll start with my right arm, Norma Fokers. Administrative aide retiring with 22 years of service. She served under two chiefs. She's an indispensable part of the Police Department. In fact, come on up, Norma. My husband Ed is here. Now you get to keep her. Norma has been a great asset to the Police Department, to the City of Frankfurt. I assure you, any type of discipline that we could administer as supervisors would not be the same as one look from Norma or her stalling of an officer. She is the department mother. I tell you that right now. In all seriousness, she's highly respected and is going to be sorely missed. But we're so happy for you that you're going to get time to spend with grandchildren and pursue some interests that you'd like to pursue in your retirement. So thank you for coming here. Next is Linda Roberts, Office Assistant. Probably those of you who deal -- Come on up, Linda. Retiring with seven months, six years' service. Those of you who deal with the Police Department when you come in the front door, she is the smiling face and the helpful personality that will always help you. I don't think I've ever seen her in a bad mood. I'm sure I haven't. And she's a great person with a public and is just a great example for the Police Department. Thank you so much. We really appreciate it. Ricky Moore, Trail Officer Three, retiring with 23 years and 10 months' service. Rick is one of those guys that has probably done a little bit of everything. In addition to all the work he does for the Police Department, you've probably seen him working at the bank and a lot of details that he works around town. He's very well-known for some of the places he works, Hickory Hills. It's just, he's been a good troop for many, many years. I had him on the ship when I was a captain. And I kind of offended him, though. When I came out of inside and I came back on the street, I said, "Well, who's the rookie here?" And he goes, "Well, I've got five years on." But we always said, you know, we can get a lot done if we had a couple of Ricky Moores. Ricky, I appreciate your service to the City and to the Police Department. Glad to hear it. I may just want to skip the next two. Ray Kenny, Police Captain, retiring with 23 years, nine months' service. Talk about a right-hand man. He's been day shift commander for five, six years now? Six years, actually. We all work in the building, the house that Ray built. Ray was very instrumental during the construction process. He's been an accident reconstructions, was an original member of the tactical team, does everything for us. He knows day shift commander on the events that we have at night. He plans those. He's always there for the citizens. And Ray, enjoy your retirement. Appreciate you. Next one, Scott Clark, Police Major, retiring with 39 years and 11 months. I sat out in the hallway. Gipper was a pup when he started. 39 years. If Norma is the department's mother, he's the department's brother. If police officer needed a place to stay, they'd go to Scott Clark's. If you needed to move, they borrowed his truck and his trailer and his strong back. If you had a family member who was sick, Scott was there. If you had death near family, Scott was there. Not only that, Scott has been, he was on the street many years and been the Commander of the Support Services Division over charge detectives and tactical response team. Always goes out with them, makes sure that officers have what they need to get the job done. Scott, they both the mold, buddy.
Thank you.
Would Chief Posits come forward to recognize the firefighter retirees?
Thank you, Mr. Goins. We have three retirements tonight in the Fire Department, but only two of them are here. First, I'd like to start with Battalion Chief Tim Warman. Tim has been with us for almost 23 years. He is a shift commander on Crew Two. I had the pleasure of promoting him to Lieutenant in 2001 and then Captain in '06 and then made his way up to Battalion Chief. So he is going to be sorely missed, very conscientious about his job and wish him the best in his retirement. We have a plaque for you here, presented by Battalion Chief Tim Warman, October 88th, July 2011, in honor of 23 years dedicated service to the citizens of Frankfurt Fire Department and the citizens in service. Thank you very much. And next, we have Dan Schaus. Dan hit his 20-year mark, just what, last month, I guess, this month?
We skipped.
And decided he's going to go. I think everybody knows Dan. He's been instrumental in a lot of the Cable Ten City of Frankfurt forums, narrating or moderating those. He always joked about on his job description, the 17th item was any and other all assigned duty. So he always called himself Number 17.
17. That's me.
Anyway, we have something for him. In honor of Dan's service to Battalion Chief Dan Schaus, Frank Fire MS, our Public Education and Public Information Officer, July 91 to July 2011.
Awesome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And he also takes care of all the photos when we have promotions and retirements. So we'll have to find a replacement for that. The third retirement we have tonight is Gary Cale. He is our Fire Marshal. He's not with us tonight, but I did want to recognize that he's leaving us after 23 years of service with the City. And 22 of those years, he has been the City's Fire Marshal. So I'll pass that along to him, Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Next, we have a retiree from the Sewer Department. I don't think he's here tonight, Mr. Cale. The retiree is, would you like to say anything or want me to read his commendation? Stanley Green, who is Maintenance Tech Four, is retiring after 13 years and six months with the Sewer Department. We wish him well. Then we have one retiree from the Parks Department. Jim, would you please come forward?
Thank you. We're here to honor Mike Laye tonight. He's retiring after 20 years and seven months of service. Mike came to us. He's worked in just about every area we've had. He was our East Frankfurt Park Manager, Capital View Park Manager, moved to the golf course when the superintendent left. He assumed the golf course superintendent job for a year. And most recently, he's retiring from the downtown area. He works with Riverview Park, Ford Hill, Capital City Museum, the downtown concerts. And we'll miss Mike and we really hope he goes on to another good life.
And now we have firefighter promotions. Chief, would you once again come forward?
Well, as a result of Battalion Chief Tim Warman retiring, these four guys that are here probably hate to see them go personally, but they're glad to see them go because they all get promoted as a result. I'd like to start with Mark Trailer. Can you come on up, Mark, and your family? Mark is being promoted tonight to Sergeant. He is our technical rescue team guru, specialty rescue. He's a guy we look to for all those specialty fields, all the intricacies of any kind of technical rescue. He heads that team up. So we really appreciate his service and very excited about him being promoted to Sergeant tonight. So if you would like to pin his badge on, his son, and I'll let his wife take care of his collar pins? Don't stick him there.
Congratulations, Mark.
Our next promotion is to the rank of Lieutenant, and that is Dennis Hodge, moving up from the rank of Sergeant. And he has his family. Dennis has been with us for 11 years now. He's also, has been one of our rescue sergeants. So he's moving up now to be one of the station officers. So he's got his hands a little more full than they were before. Would you like to do the badge?
Sir.
Next, we have Lieutenant John Refford, being promoted to the rank of Captain. And John has his wife here, who is going to pin his badge on. John's been with us for 13 years now. He was in the first group of recruit firefighters that I hired when I became chief here. And our final promotion tonight is Captain John Hayden, going to the rank of Battalion And John is another recruit that I hired back in '98, along with that large group. Who wants to do the badge?
I want to do the badge.
No? Congratulations to all of you who have been promoted and those that retired, and thank you very much for your service. Next item on the agenda is Citizens Comments. And of course, the Citizen Comments section, any citizen come forth and should address the commission. Try to stay within a five-minute limit, and then we move on. Any citizens' comments? Okay, seeing none? We'll move on into the ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. We have several ordinances tonight. Mr. Sprester, would you care to do 4.1, please?
Ordinance 4.1 by title, an ordinance to amend the City of Frankfurt's Code of Ordnances, Chapter 150.05, by amending the City of Frankfurt's Property Maintenance Code, Section 301, subsection 301.4.2. Summary: This ordinance amends the City's Property Maintenance Code, Section 301, subsection 301.4.2. More specifically, the request is to establish the fee for certificate of occupancy rental inspections at $20.
Okay, I entertain the motion regarding ordinance 4.1. Some of, we got a motion for approval by Mr. Turner?
I'll second.
Yeah, second. Commissioner Wilder? Any questions, any comments? All right, please call the roll.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Hayden?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, so ordinance 4.1 is enough here.
Ordinance 4.2, an ordinance to amend the City of Frankfurt's Code of Ordnances, Chapter 150, by amending the permit and inspection fees of subsections 150.1 Building Codes and 150.3 Electrical Codes. Summary: This ordinance amends the City's Building and Electrical Code Fees, Chapter 150, Section 150.1 and 150.3. More specifically, the request is to amend the fees for inspections and permits.
Okay, I entertain the motion pertaining to ordinance 4.2. You had a motion for its approval or not?
I'm ready to approve.
Got a permission, Wilder? Motion to approve? This is second.
I'll second.
Mr. Hayden? Any questions? Comments? Call the roll.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, so ordinance 4.2 is approved.
Ordinance 4.3 by title, an ordinance to amend the City of Frankfurt's Code of Ordnances, Chapter 152, by amending the City of Frankfurt's Zoning Regulations, Article 9 Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance, Section 9.4.2 Duties and Responsibilities of the Local Administrator, and Section 9.7 Definitions of the City of Frankfurt's Zoning Ordinance. Summary: This ordinance amends the City's Zoning Ordinance, Article 9 Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance, Section 9.4.2 Duties and Responsibilities of the Local Administrator, and Section 9.7 Definitions of the City of Frankfurt's Zoning Ordinance as requested by the Division of Water.
Okay, do I have a motion pertaining to the acceptance of the first reading of ordinance 4.3?
No.
First reading.
First reading.
Okay, very good. Without any objection, we have the first reading.
4.4 by title, an ordinance amending the City of Frankfurt's Code of Ordnances, Chapter 151, by amending Part 9 Street Naming, Closing, and Site Addressing Procedures, Subsections 9.02.01, 9.03.01, 9.04.01, 9.05.01, and 9.06.01 of the City of Frankfurt's Subdivision and Development Plan Regulations. Summary: This ordinance amends the Subdivision and Development Plan Regulations, Chapter 151 of the Code of Ordnances, by specifically amending Part 9 Street Naming, Closing, and Site Addressing Procedures of said ordinances.
Okay, without objection, we approve the first reading of 4.4. All right, next, we have down on orders, Mr. Turner.
We have Order 5.1, an order creating a citizen task force to study a form-based code.
Okay, do we have a motion for the approval of Order 5.1?
Motion.
Permission Hayden, I got a second, but Commissioner Wilder? Any comments?
I guess we had asked folks who had an interest in applying to be on this task force to get in touch with our City Manager by today, so everyone could get an update on who's applied.
We've had very good response. I don't have the full list with me, but we had 11 prior to our commission meeting start today. And I don't have the list with me, but they're all very appropriate persons, individuals who are interested and have some background in that area.
Do we feel that that's, do we feel that that's too many and that we'll have to choose to whittle that down, or do we want an 11-person task force?
I think the commission at the last meeting discussed the possibility of having five to seven members. And I think that would be preferable. And I emphasize to every one of them that we want their input regardless of who ends up on the task force.
That's good. How and when will that decision be made?
Pardon me?
How are we going to decide who serves on the task force?
We're open to suggestions, however you'd like to pursue that.
Would it be, it seems like that's a discussion and a decision that would need to be made in a meeting. We had discussed not having a regular work session next Monday in light of the fact that we're having a joint meeting with the county and I think, and with KCDC, right, to discuss a TIF. But it seems that waiting two weeks might be too long to put this task force together because there is a timeline that needs to be adhered to. Is that, is that list, would that list, could that list be available for us to discuss it today?
Let me see. The timeline pertaining to this is saying, tonight, we, let's see, we have a proposal received in 7/11, let's see, 7/14, let's see, 8, where we are down here.
Mayor, if I might make a suggestion, how about if I provided the list to all the commissioners and each commissioner chose one person? That would be five members.
What if we all end up choosing the same one person? I mean, shouldn't we choose more than one?
Well, I think that's why it might be good to, I mean, both in the interest of transparency, but also to avoid that duplication the commissioner had in references. So I think it might be a good idea for us to just, to actually just discuss it and hash it out.
Would you like me to get the list? Is that what I'm hearing?
I would.
You mean, right now?
Yes. Or I mean, or we can wait till newer old business.
New business, yeah.
But I think it's something we should work out today.
Okay, Commissioner May?
I was going to say, I don't know that I necessarily think it's a good idea just to go by the 11 people on the list because there may be some other people that we could recommend that maybe didn't get a chance to apply. Or there may be people on the list that are, it could be 11 people that have 11 diverse backgrounds that are great, but some of them could have the same background and we could maybe end up getting too much of a slant from one perspective. I don't know if that's bad or good, just a thought. And let me ask one quick question of the solicitor. And I know we don't want to, we want to obviously discuss this in an open meeting, but we could look at letters of application when we go into closed session since it's for personnel. I believe that falls under the statute. And we don't have to do it that way, but it's just, just a thought if you don't want to talk about not supporting somebody in open sessions.
Generally, the exception to the open meetings is when you're discussing the appointment of an individual employee, member, or student. And I don't know that the appointment of someone to the citizen task force would fit within those.
I just was trying to remember because I know like the word appointment, I knew it's in the statute. It's okay, I just, I didn't know how, if we had resumes of the folks, if we had questions about it.
Am I correct in understanding that the 11 folks who have expressed interest have done so in writing?
By email, either by letter, hard copy letter, or email.
And I assume that-
None of these are word of mouth. They have, and also, I stand corrected, the size of the task force would be seven.
I think that's a good number.
Well, if you say you have 11 so far, I would, now, I would be satisfied with receiving a list of the 11 from the City Manager and with, I guess, with some reason why they think they're served. And then have the commission to rank them individually and then let him tally them up. Yes, sir.
Mayor, I don't know that I'm prepared to rank tonight.
Oh, no, I don't mean tonight.
Or to decide who, I mean, I need some time to review those names.
Yes.
And I know that we're on a time crunch here, but I don't know that I would be, I would be able to or would be appro- would be able to or would be appropriate for me to make that decision tonight.
A question. How soon could you have a list, if the commission would be desirous of doing this, of ranking, if, could you get the information to us to review?
I could give the list out to all the commissioners in the morning, say by 10:00 a.m. I would say that, you know, we did not request a resume or any kind of background on these individuals, so we don't have that to look at. However, I think they are all known for their work or their service to the community through serving on some kind of governmental unit or through their participation in public meetings, so I think they're all known to us either by person or by their organization that they represent. So, I think, I do not think that would be a barrier to the commission, and I think it will know all these folks, and we could get the list out by 10:00 a.m. in the morning and then have a deadline self-imposed, whatever you want to set your deadline, but it is important that we get started and get organized because they're expected to meet the first time on August 12th, is that right, Rebecca? So, we have until August 12th before they would have their first meeting, but we would certainly want them notified, properly notified, and, you know, for an appropriate period of time.
What is a form-based code? What is that?
Pardon?
I couldn't understand what you're saying.
No.
The, I think, I know that a real effort was made to identify kind of the obvious stakeholders in terms of groups that this would be relevant to, including Downtown Frankfurt Incorporated, obviously, South Franklin Neighborhood Association, some of the different planning boards like ARB and Code Enforcement, et cetera. Invision Franklin County, the Pioneer in Healthy Communities Initiative, and I'm pretty confident that, I expect that 11 very well-qualified people applied. I'm always kind of reluctant to make decisions, you know, outside of public meetings, but I think that I wouldn't have a problem with, just in the interest of expediency, handling the first part of this process by getting us the listed names and giving us time to review them and rank them, so long as we collate and discuss and choose the task force in a meeting, especially if there wouldn't be any, excuse me, mayor.
You got a knee-wrist. I'm sorry.
Especially if we wouldn't mind meeting, just tacking it onto our tar agenda on Monday and after we're finished with the county, just getting that out of the way on the first. We wouldn't even necessarily have to come back here, here to do that. That would allow us to make a decision, a public decision, in a week, which it seems that would give, that would give us time to absorb the names and to see who applied and then also give them time to get prepared for their first meeting.
Could you please explain to me, so I'll understand?
Sure.
Yeah, so if next Monday, when we have the meeting with, the joint meeting with the county and the city, then if, then we would view in open session who had applied?
Or even view the, I mean, we could go ahead and even get our responses in, Fred said he'd have a chance to, you know, to kind of tabulate things, but we could, even if it's a matter of going ahead and seeing a ranked list at that time and giving them numbers.
To understand also, are we going to discuss these individually that we're talking about, or are you just saying this is a group that has, we have prioritized them, this is the seven that's been prioritized, and list their names, or do you see that we want to discuss openly the merits of each?
I mean, if it's, this is all up to the will of the commission. If it were just up to me, Mayor, we'd just get all the names out right now and talk about it until we get it done. If folks want to do it differently, I'm pretty open to suggestion, so long as the decision is ultimately made in a meeting.
My hesitancy, which is obvious here, is that when we get people who volunteer for commissions and all, then if we discuss their merits openly, we don't, you know, I don't mind discussing them in closed sessions, but since because of the way things are in the world, you can find, I think we begin to limit-
Sure.
-the number of people from the, number of citizens who would be willing to serve on boards and commissions if they feel well. I am going to be, we want to have a discussion of my merits in public. Now, nothing to have anything to hide, but that's his, but we have four of the members of the commission, and I just wanted to express my viewpoint on that. So, does anybody else want to add anything in front of this? Mr. Turner?
As I said before, I don't know that I could make any decision tonight, but I would be willing to have it emailed out to us, and then certainly I don't mind, you know, staying a little while longer after the county meeting to finalize it so that they do have plenty of time to be informed and be prepared for their meeting on, and it's the 12th, August 12th, is that when their first meeting is?
Yes.
Okay, so no, I don't mind doing, doing that.
Commissioner May?
Just some input. When I was mayor, I started sort of the concept of bringing board members forward with resumes when I would make those recommendations, and I always feel better, I mean, we may know the people, it's just always, I think it's always good to see the background because we may not know some as well as others. I don't want to slow the process down, but it's just, if it's something that we could get copies of, I would say it'd be pretty easily obtained if we just can send emails or phone calls to the folks and ask them to provide resumes so we can have that just to look at, just to follow the same tradition as when you, as mayor, bring nominations forward, you have with the resumes in the book, just for consistency, and again, I'm not trying, I don't want to slow the process down, but also, I don't, if we look at the list and we don't feel it's balanced, I don't know what the provision would be if that happens, but I guess we can, again, discuss that next Monday if that's the will of the commission. Again, just some thoughts. Take them as you wish.
Can you comment, Commissioner?
I'm, I feel comfortable receiving the emails, giving us a chance to look over it and then responding back and forth. If they can, if they can put in a resume, it'd be great to see, and then discuss either prior to or after the next meeting in order to get this done, it needs to be, it needs to be done, the task force.
Okay, and Commissioner Wilder?
In terms of credentials and balance on the board, which I think are valid concerns, the only, the only information that I, that really concerns me is what organizations they may be affiliated with currently, because that's where I think we really need the appropriate balance, as in I think it'd be very important to make sure that we have one person who can represent the South Franklin Neighborhood Association, and one person who can represent DFI, and so on and so forth. I think that's the balance that we need, but I think that's also, for my money, I think that's also the only, those are the credentials we need, and I suspect that that information's probably already, I assume that the folks who applied represented themselves as members of DFI or SFNA, et cetera.
Not all of them.
Okay.
Most of them, but not all of them.
Because without asking, I mean, my preference would be instead of asking people to go through the trouble of a full resume, because we're going to be asking for some elbow grease from these people anyway, instead of a full resume, I think we could just ask people for, you know, just a description of credentials.
I don't understand, the only reason I asked for that, just for consistency, it's all because we do have to fit other boards, and it's not a requirement. We don't have a requirement that says the mayor or anybody has to provide resumes. It was just something that, just, I think it's a courtesy to the other board members, but doesn't mean it's discourteous that somebody doesn't provide a resume, that's all, and if somebody says they're representative from DFI, then that's, that's fine too, but one of the things, some of the other boards actually have requirements where it says a member of Historic Frankfurt, and then the president of Historic Frankfurt sent a letter nominating that person or suggesting that person to the mayor and things. I mean, there's, I don't want to make it complicated, just, I was just thinking in terms of trying to be consistent with where you do other appointments, but again, this is a whole new board, and if somebody doesn't have a resume, then I'd be perfectly happy for them to say, I don't have a current resume, who's the board, who's who I represent? That's fine. Don't want to make it complicated or too hard on people.
Okay, can we agree that city manager would assemble what information that you have, if they get this and get it to us expeditiously as possible, then we'd have, everyone have a chance to look at them and maybe prioritize or what have you? Is anybody against that idea? And then we could, at our next meeting, whether it's next Monday or what have you, next meeting, we can, could appoint members of the board? Is that okay?
That's good.
Would it be okay if I go ahead, in order to expedite this, in the morning, if I go ahead and send you the list and then accumulate additional materials and give that to you later, whenever it comes in? Because I think some of these people who are obviously active members of a particular group, but they have not been designated by that group, and they might be reluctant to say, I represent, because they haven't had a meeting yet to be designated, and we can't wait really for that, or I don't think we can.
That's fair.
Is that okay?
Okay, I agree we're down now to, have I got a motion to approve 5.1?
You've got the motion.
I think the motion was made.
Okay.
Can I have one more comment, Mayor? Just to explain to the public, now that we've discussed this, just to explain what form-based code is real quick.
Yes, sure.
It's, in a nutshell, the city got a grant to do a form-based code project for the Second Street area. It's a different type of code, I'm really simplifying things, but it's a different type of code overlay that emphasizes form over function, so it allows for more mixed-use development, more walkable and inviting urban environments, and the idea is to just create an environment that is more visually welcoming and that's easier to walk around in and that kind of gets more people out on the street, and then encourages more mixed-use. So, you have things like corner stores with apartments on top of them. That's a real simplification, but it's a, it's a process that needs to be done with a lot of community input, which is why we've put together a citizen task force, and down the road, hopefully, I expect there will be many, many other opportunities for anybody who wants input in the process to have it. We're just going to have a task force facilitating things, both to deepen the community's involvement and also to take some of the pressure off of our planning department, because we're working them pretty hard this year.
Thank you.
Okay, call roll.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Hennan?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, so Order 5.1 is adopted.
We have Resolution 6.1, a resolution authorizing the filing of an application for 2011 Safe Routes to School grant funds and designating the mayor to execute all documents pertaining to this grant.
Move for approval. Motion's approved, got a second? Got a second? Commissioner Turner, is discussion. Call roll.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Hennan?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, Resolution 6.1 is adopted.
Resolution 6.2, a resolution to adopt the City of Frankfurt Flood Mitigation Plan.
Move for approval.
Got a motion for approval? Commissioner May?
Got a second?
Second.
Got a second, Commissioner Hennan? Any comments? Call roll.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Hennan?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, Resolution 6.2 is adopted.
Resolution 6.3, a resolution approving and authorizing the City of Frankfurt Transit Service to provide free deviated fixed route transit services to Kentucky State University students. If you'll remember, we had a real good discussion on this. This will allow Kentucky State University students to be able to have free transit to the downtown area and be very valuable once the downtown River Lab is established, and so we're very happy that we have gotten as far with this plan.
We have motion for approval.
I move for approval, Mayor, and may I make a comment real quick, or should I wait until the second?
Let's get a motion, and then a second.
I'll second.
Okay, you got a motion. Okay, Commissioner Turner?
I just want to say that I think that this is a big step for the City of Frankfurt and for Kentucky State University, because I think that, as City Manager Goins pointed out, that there's going to be the downtown laboratory, and this is going to allow students at Kentucky State to travel more throughout the city, but more importantly, I think it is an example of our two governments working together to try to make a better situation for both the city and for the students, and I think it's a win-win situation, and I'm very proud to be on the commission, and I will certainly vote yes for this motion.
Okay, thank you. Call roll, please.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Hennan?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes, and I thank Commissioner Turner for suggestion.
Okay, yes, so Resolution 6.3 is approved. Now, we're down to the consent calendar. Mr. Goins?
Item 7.1, to authorize approval of an agreement with SESAC for the 2011 and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents as may be necessary. Item 7.2, to execute a lease to be entered into between Commonwealth of Kentucky and all A-Class Incorporated with respect to Frankfurt Convention Center. And this is a lease to be entered into between us for the basketball tournament, right? And then 7.3, to authorize a one-year agreement with Essential Safety LLC and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents. This is for health and safety training for the sewer department personnel. Item 7.4, to authorize bids for Jennifer Hills Rehab Project, which is sewer department 7.5, to obtain approval of change order two to award additional funds and contract time to the construction contract with Kenny Incorporated, and to authorize the mayor to sign all documents related to this change order with the sewer department. The revised contract amount will be $1,947,593.33. Item 7.6, to authorize a contract award to Scott Brothers Construction to construct a mock residence training building funded by a grant, and to authorize the mayor to sign any necessary documents for the fire department. Item 7.7, to authorize agreements with University of Louisville City Solutions Center and University of Kentucky to create a preservation form-based code for Second Street, and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents. Item 7.8, to authorize a bid award for a contract for mowing, weed eating, and bush hogging with Stan's Lawn Care LLC, Stanley Ritchie, and authorizing the mayor to execute the service contract and sign all documents as may be required. Item 7.1- Item 7.9, to authorize the mayor to sign the 2010-2011 Annual Audit Engagement Letter between Mount Joy Chilton Medley LLP and the City of Frankfurt. Item 7.10, to authorize a purchase order to Siemens Water Technologies Corporation, formerly known as U.S. Filter and Verix Products, for the purchase of bi oxide for odor control and pipe corrosion in the pump stations and collection systems of our city sewer department. Item 7.11, to approve the letter of engagement and agreement to retain Sturgill Barker, Barker &amp; Maloney, PLLC, to represent the City of Frankfurt in the workers' compensation case filed by firefighter Gene Welborn and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents. Item 7.12, to approve the letter of engagement and agreement to retain Sturgill Barker, Barker &amp; Maloney, PLLC, to represent the City of Frankfurt and the motion to reopen workers' compensation case filed by former firefighter Meredith Redford and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents. Item 7.13, to authorize the mayor to sign a deed of correction concerning the purchase of property in the Carpenter Farm by Clark Dental Properties LLC. Item 7.14, these personnel actions, appointment of Tom Robertson Parks, appointment of Robert Weber, Public Works, appointment of Ryan Adams, Public Works, promotion of Ronnie Means, Public Works, promotion of Jessica Woolbridge, Police, Jeff Abrams, Police, Robert Worfel, Police, Charles Adams, Police, Ken Hopkins, Police, Travis Ellis, Police, Lynn Aubrey, Police, Derek Napier, Police, John Hayden, Fire EMS, John Redford, Fire EMS, Dennis Hodge, Fire EMS, Mark Taylor, Fire EMS. Retirement, Norma Fulkerson, Police, Linda Roberts, Police, Ricky Moore, Police, Ray Kennedy, Police, Scott Clark, Police. Retirement, Dan Shouse, Fire EMS, Tim Warford, Warfordman, Fire EMS, Gary Kell, Fire EMS. Retirement, Mike Lay, Parks, Stanley Green, Sewer Department, Jerry Markham, Resignation from Police Department, Resignation of Paul Scott, Public Works.
I'd like to entertain a motion pertaining to approval of the consent calendar.
So move.
So move, Commissioner Turner, and second with Mr. May. Call roll.
Commissioner Wilder.
Yes.
Commissioner Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes, and I'd like to thank all of the people who are retiring for their service to the city, and congratulations to those promoted.
Commissioner May.
I vote yes, and I also want to say how much I deeply appreciate those who have been with us for a number of years that retired tonight. We're going to have a large void to fill with many of these in this many departments and just the, the great quality of folks that, that we've had through the city. This was a testament to how great of a place it is to work, by these folks staying so long, and we're really going to miss them, and we'll see them around the community, but just miss working with them on a professional basis. And also, congratulations to those that were promoted tonight. Yes.
Mayor Graham.
Yes, so the consent calendar is approved. Next on agenda, board appointments, there being two on the Planning Commission. One is the reappointment of Patty Cross for her second four-year term ending 7/115, and the reappointment of Carol Smith, who just fulfilled a short term for someone, for her first four-year term ending 7/115. You have letters of recommendation in the packet, and you've had your resume. Mr. May, move for approval. Do I get a second?
A second, Mayor.
Second, from Mr. Wilder. Please call roll.
Commissioner Wilder.
Yes.
Mr. Haddon.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. May.
Yes.
Mayor Graham.
Yes, so we have the reappointment of Patty Cross and Carol Smith through the Planning Commission. Next on agenda is old business. Mr. Goins.
Thank you, Mayor. We've had prior discussions about the roof problems in this building, especially the roof over the fire department. And there's a higher degree of urgency after last Tuesday's deluge of rain for about 40 minutes. Chief Posits reported that we actually had water running down the interior walls, and Chief, did you want to say more about that?
After that rain that you referred to, we had some, some new leak areas that we had not seen before, and we had some that were the older leaks, one that actually had been patched before and started re-leaking. The only other thing I would add is Mr. Banks went through the fire department and looked at each of those areas with us on Friday, so he's here tonight to give the commission an update on his findings and recommendations. And any other questions, you can, I'll be, I'll be glad to come back up.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. David Banks, would you mind giving us your report? Mr. Banks, architect.
Thank you. Yes, I'm David Banks, architect here in Frankfurt. I met with each of you at the work session, and we talked about the condition of the roof. I indicated I've been up there a couple of times and have looked at the condition, found where I thought the problems were, and then when Chief Posits said maybe it'd be a good idea to come look inside and see where he was finding leaks, did that on Friday, as he said, and found that a lot of the places were exactly where I expected them to be. There are some real deficiencies on the roof. In addition to that, during the work session, the issue was also raised about the possibility of a green or vegetative roof. And when I went back to my office, I found out I had some information along those lines in my library, so I brought along a little bit tonight if you want to get into that issue. Also did a little bit of research on the internet. As I told you at that session, the only way we could proceed with that would be to have a study done of the roof structure by a structural engineer. And I have mentioned that to a fellow who's done work for us before in Lexington, and he would be willing to do that if you so desired to proceed with that. However, I would say that based on the rains that we've had here in the last week or so, that is going to delay the process. If we have to do first a structural analysis, come back with a full report as to its feasibility, and then decide how to design the roof. There's going to be a period of design of the roof, no matter which option you decide, but I would, I would say I'm here to answer any questions that I can. I can show you some, some pictures of the roof. I can show you information on vegetative roofs. I can answer your questions, but I think what we need to know is what do you wish us to do next?
Question to Mr. Goins. You having this discussed on old business tonight is because you think it's immediate need to do something?
Yes, our, we've, we've had problems, you know, also in, in this portion of the building, but not nearly as bad as our firefighters have experienced, and they've been very, very patient. I, I think it's one of the first problems brought to my attention when I started here about six, seven months ago, and Commissioner Haddon and I did a, a visit to all the fire stations, and this was pointed out to us at that time, and it persisted. You know, roof leaks don't, don't heal, and they don't get any better, they just get worse. So our firefighters have been very patient, and we appreciate that from them, but their living quarters are actually affected by these rains, and I, I'm not an expert, but I personally feel this needs to be addressed as quickly as best we can possibly do that.
And then, and then you talk about something to be done immediate, and then maybe discussion of that thing more long-term overall that we just talked about.
Well, not really, because we, we have, we've tried to remedy the problem by doing some spot patching, and, you know, prior, Chief, you might be able to address this better than me, but it, we did some, we brought some cost figures together for the last two or three years, and, you know, we spent $10,000, $20,000 several times, and, and the problem's worse than it was, so it appears that the only solution would be a complete roof, but...
Okay. I would confirm that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wilder.
I think we clearly need a complete new roof, and I, and I can speak to that from years of experience in the roofing industry. We, this is, we've been discussing this for quite a while, for weeks now, for over a month now, and the commission keeps expressing an interest in a green roof, and I think we understand that a structural evaluation would be needed. Time's such an issue, and it clearly is, I mean, why don't, why don't we just do it? Why haven't we done it already? It seems like we could have gotten one finished already. But if you're asking my two cents, then yeah, let's get it done. Let's do a structural evaluation, so we can at least know if that's an option and move forward as, as quickly as possible.
I mean, I'm fine to go ahead, move forward with, especially if we've had leaks like we've had, you said Tuesday? Because I was out of town, I apologize, so, sort of behind on that.
And if we've had heavy leaks for a while, then it might not be a bad idea to get a structural evaluation anyway, because you have the potential for structural damage with sustained leaking.
Okay, you, you wanting the commission to give you the go-ahead and start moving forward quickly?
Yes, sir, and, and what direction, I mean, are, do, do we need a consensus to do a structural evaluation, or do, I mean, should we go forward with that, or is that what we're hearing, or?
I assume there's money in the, I assume that, that we have money in the budget that could handle.
Do you have any rough estimate of what that might cost, or how long it might take?
Well, the, the cost is going to depend on the quality of the roof, of course. I do not have any cost figures on going with the vegetative roof idea. Haven't been able to find out anything on that yet. I'd need to talk to some more people.
I think we're just asking about the evaluation, about the structural evaluation.
The structural evaluation, we could, we could call tomorrow and get someone working on that.
Yeah. But any idea on the cost of the structural evaluation?
We haven't given any parameters to work on yet, so I don't have a proposal for that, but it would, I would think it would be within $10,000.
Well, it seems to be that you, you want to mess the quickest action possible to keep the water from coming into living quarters of the fire.
Yes, sir, and I, I think this, in my experience, this rises to the level of emergency, and we might be able to dispense, once we decide what the commission wants to do, we might be able to dispense with the, the normal process of bids, is that right, Mr. Dawson?
Right.
Okay.
I don't feel any opposition to us moving forward expeditions, you do, huh?
Well, I think the question is in which direction.
Okay.
I mean, because I prefer that we do a structural evaluation last month, so we can go ahead and start moving on things, but, I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to see us get a structural evaluation on the roof to determine if a green roof's even feasible. And if the roof's been leaking for a while, a structural evaluation wouldn't hurt anyway just on the off-chance that we have structural damage.
Mr. Banks, could you go ahead with that as soon as possible?
Yes.
And make the connections with, with the structural engineer and also coordinate that with Jeff Hackbart, who is, is not able to be here tonight?
For what it's worth, at time, and I realize time's the essence, so that might make this a little less workable, but ideally, the ideal way to work a process like this would be to actually put out a bid on a green roof and to have the structural evaluation be factored into that bid, because ideally, the folks that would put on the roof would also be the folks doing the evaluation. That just cuts out, it cuts out some of the middleman, and then they're responsible, then, then you have ultimate in-house responsibility for the structural integrity of the project, as in if you have one entity do a structural evaluation, then you have another entity come in and do work based on their structural evaluation. If something goes wrong, you end up with finger pointing, you end up with, well, they said we could do this, but they were wrong, or, well, we said they could do that, but they ended up doing something a little different. It's kind of, you know, ideally, you would have the evaluation and the work being done within, you know, by the same, by the same body.
Well, there's, there's a lot of design work that has to go into the roof, you know, you just don't call up somebody and tell them to put a roof on.
Understood.
And so I think the point is, we could proceed with the, some of the design of the roof at the same time the structural engineer is looking at it, but at some point, you have to make the decision, is the roof going to be able to accommodate a green roof or not?
Right, right.
Then that, then you can complete the, the design of the roof.
I, I understand that. I'm, I'm saying that the structural evaluation would have, would have more merit if it were done by, if it were done by a body that, that has experience in actually building green roofs and seeing the process all the way through to the end.
The engineer that I have talked to has done a couple of them already.
Okay.
However, they're new construction, not existing, I think. That's part of the problem.
I mean, I would, we've got, there, there are engineers in the, in the region who have rehabbed, who have done structural evaluations for existing structures.
Sure.
And rehabbed those structures into, into green roofs, but ideally, that's who we would want doing the, the structural evaluation.
Okay, now, commission, for our action here, I'd like to entertain a motion that we proceed and declare this as an emergency, to get, so we can get bids, and then when you get the bids, then we suggest that we have a special meeting, what to get the bids, to accept the bids. Can I get a motion to do that? To move forward and fair enough motion, declare the emergency, and then...
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, the definition of, of that, declare an emergency for the purchase, does that, do you all think that really meets that? Because it's a leaky roof.
Mr. Goins.
I'm not sure.
Well...
I'm not trying to say, because I know it's important, if I live, I mean, if it was coming in my bedroom, I would, I would say it's real important, but I just, I don't know that that's going to...
Spirit of... I think it, that in this case it would, because if we do have some more torrential rains like we have had the last couple of weeks, then each time you have another rain, it causes more and more problems, and it just exacerbates the already poor condition of the, of the roof, and will ultimately cost more to fix. So, you know, it's not an emergency in terms of someone's going to lose their life.
Right, right, right. No, I knew that. I just, and the reason, I apologize to you for being, because I was, I was out last week, and so I didn't know how bad, that's why I was, was trying to get clarified, if it's, if it's at the point where it's that bad, literally, where stuff's falling, falling like insulation, or...
Have you walked over there?
I haven't, I haven't seen it yet. No, this is my first time being back in City Hall. Have you seen?
Just on the tour. It was disgusting just on the tour.
Commissioner Haddon? I did not hear you. I couldn't hear you. What would you comment?
I said that the roof was disgusting in January when I took a tour. I can only imagine what it looks like after all the rain we've had this year.
Commissioner Wilder?
If, if we declare, if we declare this to be an emergency, then the commission surrenders a degree of oversight over the process, and I would be pretty reluctant to do that... And I would be pretty reluctant to do that, especially on a lot of the fact that the commission's been, been expressing a preference to go in a certain direction that hasn't, and no steps have been taken in that direction, no steps have been taken in that direction in over a month. So, I'm sensing a reluctance to go that way. And I'm concerned that if we declare this an emergency, that this isn't going to be done according to our desire or specifications. I'd much rather we just practically treat it as an emergency and get things done as soon as possible. But, you know, like I said, this is, this evaluation could have been done, could have been done last month. I don't understand why it hasn't been. But for it to be put off as long as it has and for us to now be asked to surrender oversight and to declare an emergency, I'd be pretty reluctant to do that.
Mr. Luister, in our initial comments a minute ago, we suggested that we could make it, declare it an emergency, then expedite moving the funds, is that correct?
That's my understanding, that it would take away some of the barriers that are time-consuming. Is that accurate?
Emergency P O is what we typically do on something like that. You'd expect P O to process that one. It sounds like the commission would rather get quotes, a quote or half.
Well, it seems to me we've got to do something quickly. I might go get hung up on a word.
Can I ask, can I ask a question?
Personally, I might get hung up on a word here, about emergency and not emergency, as long as we move forward.
And that's why, the thing, I was trying to say, we should have money in our building account. Do you know, if we have, do you do anything with the building account? Oh, can I ask the, do you know how much we have in our building account?
If you want, please come forward.
Sure.
And if not, all we have to do is just allocate funding, we can say not to exceed a certain amount, but require bids. That's the only thing that worries me about, if we do, that sort of lets bids go out, not bids go out, but work go out without getting bids. Not that saying that's necessarily wrong, but we can still expedite, as the mayor was saying, we can, doesn't matter what we call it, if we authorize the spending of funds for purchase orders up to a certain amount, to what we think would cover it and then some, then would that give the authority for the issuance of a purchase order without having declared emergency? And still keep it to where people will still, because people are going to have to give us quotes anyway?
I think so. Right now, currently, we don't have a budget, a funded budget for that particular item, but...
But it's in the building account. I mean, we could take, the maintenance account that Public Works has for maintenance of buildings...
Yeah, we've got an account designated for, we just do a budget amendment, that's what we do.
That's what I was saying, we could just, we could either, and as the mayor said, it's just wording, we can shift money from one account to that account or just say we're authorizing it. I mean, we're getting to accounting things, but in terms of accounting, we're talking about where to, where to take it from, out of the general fund and put it into the building, the building account, just for, it's just mainly for accounting purposes, as the mayor said, doesn't matter if we say it's an emergency or not. We know that they needed roof, our goal is to get the roof as soon as possible. And if we authorize funds from, whether we do it as a budget amendment or just say we authorize money to be taken out of this account.
We can do a budget amendment after the fact, but just getting your house permission to go ahead and start the P O process.
Okay, Commissioner May, will you make a motion?
I'll make that motion, that we authorize the issuance of a purchase order to move forward on structural analysis for a, preferably a green roof. If it's not structurally sound, then we put the best roof on the fire station. Maybe that's too specific, I don't know.
Do we have a second to that motion? We got a second from Commissioner Wilder. Any more discussion or call roll?
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?
Yes, so the motion is approved. Okay. Mr. Luister, do you have any more old business?
Chief is...
Chief.
I just wanted to mention regarding if, if we do go the green roof route, just for your education, you may not be aware of a couple of things. The center part of the building is actually a domed roof. So, I don't know how you're going to put vegetation on that portion unless you totally remove that area and turn it into a flat roof. So, that, that needs to be considered. That's a pretty extensive area, that is basically a big camel hump up there. Secondly, if we, if we go vegetation on the roof, somebody's going to be responsible for maintaining it, which also means that we're going to have to provide access. Right now, the only access we have to get to the roof is climbing up a radio tower. So, you can't do that with whatever maintenance tools and equipment you need to, to take care of the vegetation that we do end up with. So, that's just something to keep in mind if, if we go that route.
Okay, thank you. Any other old business? None. I got one thing I want to just suggest to us. Now, in the, we have approved not, keeping the, the $300,000 for garbage, here we go, from last January up to this past June. Now, in the budget that we passed, I believe there's, in there is $550,000, I believe that's correct, for pick, for garbage collection, no. So, and we've already started into this next fiscal year, so in that budget is $550,000. So, I think we need to somehow get started on what kind of plan, how it's going to look or whatever it is. And I'll tie up the loose ends to this. I've had several people ask me when I go out, out and about in the community, said, how is this going to work? And I really don't know. And so, that's old business. We don't have to discuss it tonight if you want to, but this has to be, to me, something that needs to be addressed sort of quickly, in post haste. Commissioner Wilder?
I mean, I can, because one of the other things we've been discussing lately is making a budget amendment in regards to employees' COLA that goes into effect in January. So, it might be appropriate to, well, I guess first, a question is, is do we need a, do we actually need a budget amendment to reflect the, to reflect the garbage fee or the lack Does that require a budget amendment? And that's just for now, because we're obviously talking about, you know, we've been spending a lot of time reassessing the fee. And it's entirely possible that the fee will be restructured within the next few months. And that's going to require, obviously, a budget amendment.
My understanding is, when he passed the budget, that we were making it budget neutral. So, anything that we did going forward would be budget neutral. So, that's, that was my understanding. Now, if we make a change that affects the revenue stream, then we'd have to, I think we'd have to make a budget amendment for that, those type of issues.
And the, and the decision, since the decision to not send out, the decision to not send out the bill at the beginning of this month was, that's reflected in our current budget, isn't it?
Well, that's really, to be honest with you, that's for revenues coming in for the last, to finish off last time's budget. So, I would have made an accrual for that in last year. So, I did make an accrual for that.
Okay, so even, even, and even with us, even with that last bit of anticipated revenue not coming in at the end of last year, my understanding is that we still grew the surplus?
Yeah, the surplus was what I reported last, last week, approximately $1 million. Of course, that's preliminary before the, our audit report.
And so, it probably would have been about 1.3. And since we didn't send out the, the bill, it's $1 million surplus. So, we're still, we're still growing, we still grew the reserve count by $1 million. It was just, we grew it by a million as opposed to $1,300,000.
So, what, so are we not going to have a, what are you, what are you saying? We're not going, not going to address and have a garbage pickup type change or what?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, I thought you were, I thought you were referring just to the bill that didn't, that didn't go out.
No, no, no. That's behind us. I was, what I was addressing was going forward in this, the fiscal year that we're now in, that in the budget, it shows $550,000. So, if we don't get that $550,000, then the budget's not balanced. That's all I'm saying.
Oh, understood.
So, there has to be something done.
Right.
To implement it, to make up for that $550,000 that would have been collected through the $5 fee that is here, which is no longer exists.
Sure. No, yeah, that makes sense, I understand, Mayor. Although, I guess, I think I can't address it. I think the concern you're raising is really only relevant if we abolish the fee, if we actually take it off the books and get rid of it entirely. And then, you're right, we would have to, we'd have to do something to deal with that gap.
So, you guys have new business we want to talk about?
Well, no, but the, what we've been talking about for the past, for the past number of weeks, or I guess even the past number of months, is setting up parameters for a system where we charge according to how much. It's starting away and establish a fee that actually covers the cost of collection while issuing tax credits at the same time. So, we're essentially talking about bringing in at least that same amount. Well, the current fee brings in about $600,000 a year.
Yeah.
Right, I'm rounding, rounding it really easy.
Ideally, it'd be $600,000.
Sure, ideally, it would be $600,000. Nothing, everything seems to work out ideally, doesn't it? But the, the fee that's currently on the books brings in $600,000 a year. What we're talking about doing, this is a heavy simplification, what we've talked about over the past few weeks, has been using the fee to cover the cost of collection, which is closer to 1.6 million, or $1,600,000, and issuing tax credits to the tune of $1 million. So that, and very, basically though, in very practical terms, what that would mean would be that the fee would continue to bring in the same amount of money that's currently in the, in the budget. Does that make, does that make sense?
If I am a citizen, what do I have to do to get my garbage, do I have to buy any type of, some kind of card or something, or get my garbage weighed, or what, that we have discussed before?
Right.
A sticker?
Well, that's what the, I mean, we've been discussing this for a number, for a number of weeks. And the, the parameters that have been set so far in these meetings have been, the thought is that the, for a base flat fee, the city would provide rollout carts to citizens. One rollout cart, I think we were talking about the smallest available size too.
Which are what, 35, 35 gallon?
The 35, providing one 35 gallon cart for garbage and a 35 gallon rollout cart for recycling. And then if people want more or larger, more trash cans or larger trash cans, because they go all the way up to almost 100, 100 gallons, then that base subscription grows to reflect the increased number or size in cans. And the, the thought is that that, not only is that, not only is that more fair, because then people are paying, paying according to how much they throw away, but folks would also get a tax credit to, to offset what would amount to an increase in fee for a lot of people. It would be a tax credit to offset that, a tax credit associated with recycling, with using the recycling bin. And that saves the city money in a couple of ways. One, by encouraging more recycling and, which saves us money because it reduces our tipping fees at the landfill, obviously. We have to pay less to throw away trash. And then it would also increase our recycling revenue, which also saves us money, because if we're providing everybody, we're providing everybody with rollout carts, that allows us to automate our collection system a little more and use, I hear people colloquially refer to them as the one-armed bandits, but, you know, actually use the trucks that have an automated arm that can pick up and load the trash, which saves us money in terms of, in terms of man-hours and also in terms of workers' comp. Because that's a real easy way to, to hurt your back.
Well, but when, what the city done, do we know how to proceed with this?
Well, we're, we're trying to work through some of these barriers. We've had numerous meetings about the billing part of it. And we've had one meeting with the plant board to investigate whether or not they would add this to their billing, which they're not inclined to do. So, they, they discussed it with us and it looks like our options would be either to get a third-party billing agency or company, or beef up internally and do the billing We're working through these questions as they come up. One question is with the tax credit, because we've got two different data systems, we would have two different data systems, one for the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Dawson, we'd have one data system that has our tax information in it. And then we would have another data system which has our garbage fee data in it. And these two data systems do not talk to each other. So, this would require us to manually match the credits up with the individual bills, is that correct?
Right.
So, right now, that's, that's, that's a barrier that we're trying to work through and overcome right now, is the two systems not talking to each other. And then, then again, we have ongoing talks with the plant board. And so, both the plant board and the city of Frankfurt are trying to revise our billing systems.
If I could just make a quick comment on the bill, and this is, regardless of how the billing gets worked out, the plant, seeing as how the plant board already sends out some bills on our behalf, namely the sewer bill, which they incorporate into their, they incorporate into their bill, they're, you know, because it's based on, on water usage, which they sell. Regardless of how this gets worked out, I think one advantage to having the plant board handle the billing for this would be just, not only is it easier for people, because then there's just one set of bills, but it's also obviously a lot easier, it makes a lot more sense for us to have all our billing handled in one, in one place. So, if the plant board is not interested in, or not willing to handle the, not willing to handle a trash bill, which frankly, I think would be pretty unreasonable of them.
It makes a lot of sense to me for them to do all our billing.
Sure.
But...
But I think it should be all or nothing, is what I'm saying. That if...
Well, they've indicated, they've indicated that they would rather separate their billing from the city's billing and not do our billing, but possibly subsidize the cost of our billing. So, if we do that, the good thing is they seem friendly to subsidize the change. But the difficult thing is accomplishing the change because the trash would be billed one way and the sewer is billed another way. Based, sewer, if I understand, Mr. Scaff, sewer is based on the owner of the property in most cases, depending on how many meters they have.
Depends on how the meters are set up.
Right. And the trash would be set up differently. So, it's, it's not a matter of just having one database and billing both fees from that database. We would need two separate databases.
I thought, when we were discussing the parameters of who gets billed, I thought the commission agreed that we would rather see it be handled the same way utilities are handled, where instead of uniformly billing property owners or uniformly billing users, it just gets... it just gets tied in with other utility, because sewer fees, for example, are not always paid by the property owner. Uh, sometimes landlords cover their tenants' utilities, and sometimes the utilities go into the tenant's name.
Exactly, exactly. And that's where you have to sort this.
As long as, as long as that's uniform, as long as.
But it's not uniform. It's, you have to sort it out.
No, I understood, but I'm saying it's, as long as the, it's already being sorted out on that end, on the utility end, right? And so as long as, um, as long as any, as long as any other user fee, essentially, we're, we're talking about user fees, whether or not it's for water, sewage, garbage, et cetera. As long as all the u, user fees are sorted out along the same lines, then that, that shouldn't be an issue. As in if, you know, if it, either, either a landlord's paying the water, electricity, gas, sewer and trash, or the tenant's paying all that stuff, as long as it's not skewed out where the landlord's paying some utilities and the tenant's paying some utilities, which is, but that, but that's why it would be desirable to have, that's why it would obviously be desirable to have all the bills coming, you know, consolidated in one source instead of having four bills coming in from four different corrections.
I, I agree, that'd be great. But, uh, Mr. Scaff, aren't there, haven't we experienced some problems with that?
Some.
Where your hair went?
Yeah, I had hair when I got this job. The, the, the problem is there are a number of different ways that, that sewer can be billed. You've got some instances where you have a property owner who, as you said, pay the utilities, and the tenant never sees that bill.
Sure.
Um, there are other situations where you have the tenant's responsibility to set up that uh, account whenever they move in. The problem is, and, and where, uh, the city manager was going is the, the two different databases. If you're talking, setting up something where a, uh, taxpayer gets a tax break because they've had a larger container, if the tenant's paying that bill, the tenant's not going to get that money back. The property owner is. How do you deal with that issue? Unless all of the solid waste fees get billed to the property owner. And we don't know, and obviously this is something we'd have to work out through the plant board, I'm assuming could be done. We don't know who gets billed on an individual property from a sewer standpoint.
Uh huh.
All we know is a bill goes out. We don't know if that goes to the tenant.
Sure.
Or that goes to the property owner. We, we just don't have that information at this moment.
I think in our, in our discussions earlier on this subject, I mean, we've talked about all this so much. Um, again, I, I seem to recall us agreeing that anybody who's, who's paying rent and paying utility bills is most likely paying taxes as well. Anybody who's, anybody who's paying rent and anybody who's paying utility bills has a source of income. Right? I mean, it's pretty hard to, it's pretty hard to pay those bills if you don't have some kind of taxable income coming in. And, uh, a tax credit wouldn't have to be applied towards property taxes per se or anything like that, but a tax credit could be issued to, I thought we determined that a tax credit could be issued to, to tenants, if we chose to do that.
I'm not sure. I haven't researched it.
The, the, the only thing about that is you'd have to, I mean, you'd have to look at every individual account and figure out, I mean, if somebody's on a retirement income and they're, and they're renting that property, you'd have to figure out how to do that. I mean, and that would be a case by case. And, um, you know, we've got roughly, it's about 12, 13,000 customers. And if I remember correctly, it's about 10,000 solid waste bills. So you'd have to do a reconciliation between about 12,000 and 10,000 people. And you'd have to do that on a regular basis to make sure that, uh, somebody, you know, if they move or whatever. There's, there's, it's probably doable, but, uh, I, I think from a logistics standpoint, you're talking a tremendous amount of, of, uh, man hours to make that happen.
To send out tax credits to tenants as opposed to property owners?
Yes.
Okay.
Whereas if you billed the property owners for solid waste, if you wanted to do a credit, it would be a very simple process for every one of those, since they're a property owner, they're paying a tax to make it go back to the property.
Right. But it would be, it would be pretty easy for folks to pass the bill along to the tenants and not to pass the tax credit along to the tenants.
Absolutely.
Right. Because the goal, I, you know, this is all, I realize this is all complicated. The goal is relatively simple, which is to see to it that the folks who produce trash pay for it, and that the folks who pay to have their trash taken away get a tax credit in return. But it's a, is where, is, I mean, as we've seen, as we've discussed many times over the last, last few weeks, there's a, that sounds simple, but it just takes a lot of discussion, a lot of work to get there. But to my understanding, staff are working on all that, and we've been kind of hitting the ball back and forth, and I guess the ball's in, in the staff's court now.
Well, the, the goal is simple, and it sounds simple.
Sure.
When you break down the process, and when you put all the steps in the process, and you start running into the missing data, or how do you arrive at the data, or the data does not interface, or the data does not overlap, then you are into, like Mr. Scaff said, a, a case by case analysis, which is ever changing.
Sure.
And, um, so, so those are the barriers that we're trying to work through and, and meeting, uh, with the plant board also, uh, trying, trying to, uh, work through those questions and barriers as we go.
And I assume that some of these questions are bridges that would want to be crossed only at, you know, or at least seriously crossed only after we've figured out who's even going to handle the billing? Whether or not it's the plant board or internally, or?
Uh.
Or does it all need to be figured out together?
Well, I, I think we have to do this simultaneously, uh, because regardless of who sends out the bill, who, regardless of who does the billing, these questions are going to have to be, uh, worked out.
Sure.
And, and worked through. And so, uh, it's ongoing, you know, ongoing talks with the plant board, ongoing meetings with our internal billing team.
Can I say one more thing? The, the other part of this that complicates things, and, and the city manager and I have had this conversation, I guess it was last week, time flies when you're having fun. Um, there's, there's another factor in here that, that, that tends to complicate this. And that's the fact that, you know, there is still some, some this ongoing discussions of stormwater utility. So whatever is done in this process, that needs to be factored in. Because the last thing we'd want to do is go through the aggravation, and, and trust me, it will be an aggravation for everybody. And the expense, and there will be expense of, of, of doing this. We don't want to go through the, the frustration aggravation of expense to do a billing for solid waste and, and sewage. And then a couple of years down the road, all of a sudden, you've got to go through that same aggravation, frustration of expense, because now you've added a third entity in there, and it doesn't intermingle with the two you've already got. So that kind of throws a, an unknown factor out there that still has to be considered in the, in the big scheme of things.
How much, how much money do we pay the plant board? How much money do we give the plant board to handle our billing?
For billing? Isn't it about a hundred thousand?
It's, it's just under a hundred, it's 23,000 and change every quarter. It's just under a hundred thousand dollars.
Sewer only.
Sewer only.
The only, I mean, because I would be inclined to suggest that, especially in our long-term best interest, that we do start handling all of our billing in-house. Does that create a problem in terms of the fact that our sewer rates are billed on, or that our, you know, that our sewage fees are based on data that the plant board has? Name of the water usage?
The conversation that we had with the plant board a week and a half ago, um, it's been, I guess, be, almost two weeks this Wednesday, um, they are willing to work with us. So, you know, if, um, if we decide to do something, whether it's doing it internally or through a third party, um, they are willing to provide the data that we would need to be able to build based upon water usage. So that's, that's not an issue that is totally insurmountable. Now, we haven't worked through that process yet, but it's something that they're, they understand and acknowledge that would have to be done.
Another significant piece of this puzzle, uh, if I understand this correctly, is that the plant board would be, be willing to cut off water service if the city's fees were not paid.
Water, if their sewer fees are not paid.
If their sewer fee is not paid.
Correct. Because it's my understanding that that's the way the statute reads, is it's for sewer service. So if they don't pay their garbage.
That shouldn't be associated with water.
Exactly, exactly.
You didn't have to say that, David. So we're, we're in process. We're, we're learning a lot and overcoming these, uh, things that we're going to have to deal with.
Well, the reason I was brought it up in the first place is, uh, back in January, February, you know, we, as a commission, we had a little session about setting in our goals for, during, for these two years or whatever. And, and we said we want to have a, um, structurally balanced, you know, budget.
Sure.
And so I knew that in the budget we passed, there's $550,000. And, um, and since we don't have the, the garbage, $5 garbage fee, my concern is that I want to raise it up to make sure that we're aware of these things and, uh, that we can, and we try to stay within what we said, you know, be a structurally balanced budget. And I just want to do some discussion so we can see where we are on this. Commissioner Turner?
Can I just add something real quick? Because I may be incorrect in my thinking here, but the ordinance that we passed and approved to not send the garbage fee bill was related to the prior fiscal year.
Yeah, that's correct.
So if this commission takes no action at this point on any trash issue, that bill would still in theory be sent out in January, correct?
No.
Or did we completely repeal?
No, we did not completely repeal the, the fee. We only waived it for the time period from January 1 of 2011 until June 30 of 2011. So the fee is now back in effect as of July 1.
Right, so if nothing is done.
It is. That's correct. It was just waived for that six month period.
So the only time we would have a question of not a structurally balanced budget is if we again waived that fee.
That's why, or do not collect as much as that. That's correct.
Which is why I think it's so important for us to get, to get all this worked out and to reach a decision one way or the other by the end of the year.
Yes.
I think, I think we're all in agreement on that.
Okay, we're all in good shape. Okay, any more, uh, oh, business? Commissioner Waller?
Uh, some of this is, is quick. One item might require some discussion. Uh, I was wondering if we could just get a, get an update. If anybody knows, although I see Jeff isn't here, he would be the most likely to know. What, uh, what's going on with the Singing Bridge? The paint job on the Singing Bridge? I mean, I know we weren't doing that work ourselves, but.
Is there any report, Tom?
Yeah, just your report. The date of the building.
But so it's a, it's a state project for our project?
Yeah, yeah. But we don't, we, uh, we just, we haven't gotten any information from him or anything. Okay. We, uh, oh, does the chief know something?
I had some contact.
Would you come up here, please?
I had some contact with the, uh, person in charge of that division at the transportation department last month, I believe it was. Uh, as you probably know, they contracted it out, they fired the contractor, and, and the plan was to rebid it and get the bridge finished. Now with the budget crunch, they're telling me they don't know when they're going to rebuild it, rebuild it, but it will be at least a year. So it's going to be in the same condition it is now for another year.
Okay. We've been discussing, we discussed parking at our last couple of work sessions. Um, since then, I've had some pretty good conversations with a number of folks downtown, including, uh, representatives of Downtown Frankfurt Incorporated, Kelly Everman and some other members of, of her board. And there were a, a couple of thoughts that came out of those conversations that I wanted to, to pitch to the commission. One is that it would be, uh, and I realize that, well, one is that it would be a, a pretty tremendous benefit to have a, to have a, a classic recognizable parking sign on West Main. There, the Sullivan parking garage tends to have about 150 empty, empty spaces every day. Uh, there's lots of concerns about available parking downtown. Lots of folks aren't aware that that garage even exists. And a sign out on the street, you know, the P with the circle in it with a little arrow would go, that, just that one piece of information would probably go a long way towards alleviating some of the parking problems downtown. Is that something that we can do anything about? That might even be a question for Gary, actually. For, because it's a signage, it's a signage question.
Yeah, go ahead. It actually isn't my department, but I know the answer.
Mm-hmm.
Um, all that's, anything in the right of way is exempt. All government signs are exempt from all of our rules. Uh, but because it's state right of way, you'd have to stick, state would have to approve it. I know when we tried to go change some of the signs, uh, Joyce Jeffries had to work with the state and a couple other departments. And it took a year and a half to try to change some of the brown signs out in 64. Um, in order for that to happen, the city agreed to change some signs that the state installed, the contractors didn't, necessarily bolt down properly, and some of the signs were leaning. We had to go and straighten them up, um, in order for us to work together. But it's exempt, and they can, the city can do whatever it wants to do with signage in this right of way, provided if it's state right of way, they get their approval and meet the standard MSBU.
MUTCD.
Acronym, uh, policies and standards.
I'll make that phone call tomorrow.
That would be, that would be.
We'll look up the code and see what size it can be. And I'll call, uh, their office tomorrow and see what we can do.
That'd be great. Thank you very much. Another, uh, another point that was made was that, uh, when, and I wasn't aware of this until it was pointed out to me, but, uh, I guess with some work on Lewis Street was done a while ago, and, uh, okay, so we have two hour limits on a lot of the spaces downtown. And it's generally accepted that, that those two hour limits are kind of necessary to keep the spaces relatively open, you know, during the business day. And, uh, Lewis Street used to have, apparently used to have two hour limits, and they, they just kind of seemed to have been left out the last time work was done in that area. I'm just going on hearsay here. But it is true that there aren't any two hour limits on any of the parking spaces on Lewis Street, which is that alleyway between the Old Capitol and Buddy's Pizza. Would it help parking downtown to have two hour limits painted into, into there? I mean, it seems like it would at least be more consistent because we've got, we've got parking spaces painted with two hour limits everywhere else in the area.
I think, I think the ordinance says that it's, it's downtown. It's two hour everywhere. If it's not signed, then we can check on that.
Right.
So I think it's just a matter of signage, probably.
I think, yeah, I think it is too.
Okay, well, I'll make that call tomorrow.
And then the, the, the last suggestion, and I think this is a really good one. There's, there's always been lots of talk about a diagonal parking kind of, you know, test project or pilot, uh, somewhere, somewhere in the city to add a few more parking spaces. The spaces that have been floated have never really, uh, seemed to work out for one reason or another. Uh, there were concerns that Bridge Street was a little too narrow, wouldn't add enough spaces. Uh, Broadway was, was considered too narrow. Uh, a bunch, I was with a bunch of citizens who actually did an informal test on Broadway of parallel parking. We were able to add spaces, but it was way too easy to get a tire caught in the railroad tracks. So that, kind of felt that was unsafe. But, uh, it was Ed Council who had the idea of, of maybe establishing some diagonal parking, um, in front of Liberty Hall and Orlando Brown. The street there seems to be wide enough. It's close enough to downtown that the extra parking might be helpful. And with the city building the new amphitheater there, uh, at the end of that alleyway, behind the Bar Association and next to Liberty Hall, it seems like we might have in the future. Bar Association and next to Liberty Hall, it seems like we might have, in the future, at least during events, a need for more parking in that particular space.
I think Bob Tillot looked into that before he left, but we can revisit that as well.
Could we just get a report on the feasibility of it?
Okay.
That'd be great.
Sure.
Thank you. And then, just to give the commission an update on another aspect of those conversations with DFI, lots of folks have, over the past week or two, very publicly expressed support for converting at least West Main, maybe some other streets downtown, into a two-way street. DFI and Kelly Everman urged a little bit of caution the last time. She spoke to us about it. She's very much in support of seeing a two-way street established there. But she just, she urged a little bit of caution, because there are some other plans in the works. Down, DFI has some plans in the works. There's also some plans related to the construction of the courthouse. So, she's urged us not to make any decisions without being aware of those plans. So, just to give the commission a quick report on what some of those plans are, there's, back when Harry Carver was in Kelly's position at DFI, so a number of years ago, there was a streetscape plan, a three-stage, streetscape plan that was put into effect. The first two phases had been completed. The third phase involves the streetscape on St. Clair in front of the courthouse and on that little strip of West Main right there. It mostly relates to some sidewalk improvements and streetlight improvements. I think the streetlight improvements are the most relevant part of the plan, because the, if you're ever downtown at night, you'll recognize that from St. Clair to Farmers Bank and on, pretty well lit, but you, all right, on West Main. But you go West Main closer towards Liberty Hall, it gets, it gets pretty dark. So, just kind of getting more consistent uniform lighting throughout downtown, which I think is great. There's some grant money that might be out there that they're currently pursuing. There's some question as to whether or not that work would affect a two-way, you know, would be relevant to the changing over to a two-way street or not. There's also some question as to whether or not the grant money can even be obtained. But there was, there was general agreement, and DFI agreed that it would be very good to have that street converted to a two-way street, especially for the sake of the emergence on the street. And since we would have to do a fair amount of due diligence anyway, we obviously need a, you know, we need a traffic study. We need to do a few things before, we couldn't just pull the trigger today and say, change it to a, change it to a two-way street and be done with it. We'd have to do, we'd have to go through some due diligence first. So, Kelly's suggestion, and I think it's a good one, is that we, you know, if we're interested in the concept, that we go ahead and do our due diligence. We go ahead and figure out what is and isn't feasible from an engineering standpoint, and what the cost may or may not be, et cetera. Hopefully, and if we get up to the point where we could make a decision, by then, more stuff will be known about these other plans, and we'll know whether or not it would be a good idea to continue to hold off with the due diligence, you know, in our pocket and done, or whether or not it would be okay to go ahead and make a decision.
If I may, another thing to consider is the impact on parking.
Sure.
Currently, there's a lot of loading and unloading that occurs in one lane...
Right.
...while the other lane is open. And we'll have to have more loading and unloading spaces, which will affect parking. That's something else that we'll need to consider, too.
I think that's something that would have to be taken into account in the due diligence and in the engineering study. But without, without committing to anything, I think it'd be, I'd really like to see us go ahead and start, start performing that due diligence. Go ahead and get a traffic study and figure out what the implications would be, so that we can make an informed decision down the road, one way or the other. Is that, is that agreeable to the commission?
Yes.
Okay. Almost. One other piece of old business. Well, this is kind of two pieces together. The majority of the commission have expressed an interest in establishing a 2% COLA for employees in January. And I'd just like to request that we go ahead and get some language drafted to that effect, to at least start considering and discussing. We saw some pretty heavy retirements last month. We saw some really heavy retirements today, and I'm happy for all the folks who are able to retire and the folks who are getting promoted, but it's, it hurts to see 200 years walk out the door. And that's, it's hard to replace that much experience, especially in the public safety fields, and that's where we saw most of the retirements, because you can't bring in somebody tomorrow, or next month, or even by the end of the year, to replace them, because of all the training that's required before you can actually get out into the field on your own. So, that's, we're hemorrhaging employees, and we need to, we need to do what we can to reassure and support them, because it's gonna be more expensive for us in the long run if we keep seeing as many retirements every month. So, I'd like to request that we at least go ahead and get some language drafted to that effect for us to start considering and to start publicly reading.
You making an motion?
Because that require, I think that requires the support of a majority, but...
We get to get approval.
I suppose, I suppose so.
At the time with me...
Yes, I suppose.
We all expressed an interest in the past.
Takes a motion, right?
No.
No? Okay. Okay. Just long, okay?
And then, on a larger scale, and we've discussed this and even agreed to it a couple of times over the past few months, but hopefully sometime over the next year or so before longevity pay, before longevity pay actually phases out, as per the previous commission's decision, I think it would be good for us to just reexamine our compensation policy in general, and I think a lot of employees are expecting us to do that. And I think a really important step in that process, a really important first step even, would just be for us to formally meet with employees. Not just with unions or anything like that, but just actually, I think Commissioner Turner even suggested some commission-led staff meetings or whatnot, so that we can actually hear, not just from the department heads, but actually hear from lower-level employees what their concerns are, what they feel, maybe discrepancies in our compensation policy or things they'd like to see addressed or whatnot, just so that we can... Get that dialogue started. Yeah. So, and I think, are we in agreement? That's a good first, that's a good first step, is to hear from, hear from employees.
Wouldn't you, Commissioner, head and say?
It's a great first step.
So, can we, and we've said we want to do that for a while now, but can we actually, can we really, can we do it? Can we set that up? Whether or not that means maybe turning over one of our third, I don't know when the best time to do that would be for employees, but I suspect it might be one of our 12:30, third Monday, third Monday meetings. We might even need to have a couple.
Well, you got four. You there, right? Says that's, want to do that?
No, I'm sorry. My, I had a question.
Okay. Question. Go ahead, Commissioner May.
Oh, okay. Now, 12:30 would, might cause problems for certain staffing situations. I just was throwing that out, so I don't know for where it would...
We could, we could do it similar to the way we did the garbage forums, where we have a, have a couple of meetings. I would even be open to as many. I mean, I'm happy to work as hard as you all, as you all want to work, but where we have more than one meeting, so the folks who can't make it to one can make it to another. We can maybe do one on a 12:30 Monday. We can maybe do another one then on a...
Saturday.
On a Saturday or something. I'd be, I'd be pretty open to that. And formally invite any, any staff who want to come and voice their concerns. Start getting that set up. Do we want to set a time for...
Would you want different venues? Would you want the, we have 315 active employees, I think. Depends on what day you take the picture. But, so, they're theoretically might need a room larger than this.
I suspect we would.
So, was, think through some of those statistical things.
Y'all want, any bad, just want to comment, other than Commissioner Wilder on that?
Thank you. That's all my old business.
Okay.
Mayor, can I?
Commissioner May?
Just one thing, just, just as a point of, just historical reference, the signings of downtown, there was a lot of discussion on that years ago, where a lot of signs were taken out of downtown to try to make it less sign, a lot of sign clutter was taken out. That was in conjunction with Downtown Frankfurt Incorporated tourism, historic-minded folks that wanted to try to keep a lot of the sign clutter out. So, it was at the suggestion of some of the folks from these organizations back then, that signs be taken out of Downtown Frankfurt. And we went back and removed every other two-hour parking sign on, in some places, and some other signs that didn't need to be there were taken down. So, just, it, the transition of, when leadership changes in different organizations, sometimes the priorities come around to full circle, to back to where we, where we were in some cases. Just a historical perspective.
Well, we move on. As we move forward on you 2% and things of this nature, I'll make, I will enter some more observations later, but just move on to new business. Commissioner DeGong, 10.1.
10.1 is a matter of new business, and Mr. Darren Rainbow is here to discuss it. I think he's distributed a handout to back up his presentation.
You have some color handouts. I also have with me this evening, Mr. Michael Griffin. He's with the, he came from Louisville. He's with the U.S. Geological Survey, and they're a very big partner in this project, something that's really been building since the, even before the May 2010 flood. But one weakness that every community has, ours included, is being able to let citizens know when they are going to flood. We can give them river levels, we can provide charts and graphs and recordings, but if you're new to the area, that number doesn't mean much to you. If you live in South Frankfurt, and I'll tell you, 38 feet, you may not know what that means. This new project proposed by the USGS, and actually, we've partnered with the State Division of Water, city and county planning directors have attended the meetings. This project will help them as well. And Department of Local Government and the National Weather Service, all partners in this, in this river forecasting and flooding inundation study. And I won't get into the technical part, mainly because I don't know all of the technical part. That's what Mr. Griffin's here for. But one of the biggest benefits I see of this, and it's a photo in your handout, it shows the ability of citizens to log on even to a website or to call our emergency operations center, and we can give them the data and say, hey, I live at X address or this street. The rivers may be forecast to go 10 feet more than it is now. Will that affect me? And before, it was really guesswork. We would say...
Almost. One other piece of old business. Well, this is kind of two pieces together. The majority of the commission have expressed an interest in establishing a 2% COLA for employees in January. And I'd just like to request that we go ahead and get some language drafted to that effect, to at least start considering and discussing. We saw some pretty heavy retirements last month. We saw some really heavy retirements today, and I'm happy for all the folks who are able to retire and the folks who are getting promoted, but it's, it hurts to see 200 years walk out the door. And that's, it's hard to replace that much experience, especially in the public safety fields, and that's where we saw most of the retirements, because you can't bring in somebody tomorrow, or next month, or even by the end of the year, to replace them, because of all the training that's required before you can actually get out into the field on your own. So, that's, we're hemorrhaging employees, and we need to, we need to do what we can to reassure and support them, because it's gonna be more expensive for us in the long run if we keep seeing as many retirements every month. So, I'd like to request that we at least go ahead and get some language drafted to that effect for us to start considering and to start publicly reading.
You making an emotion?
Because that require, I think that requires the support of a majority, but...
We get to get approval.
I suppose, I suppose so.
At the time with me...
Yes, I suppose.
We all expressed an interest in the past.
Takes a motion, right? No? Okay. Okay. Just long, okay?
And then, on a, on a larger scale, and we've discussed this and even agreed to it a couple of times over the past few months, but hopefully sometime over the next year or so before longevity pay, before longevity pay actually phases out, as per the previous commission's decision, I think it would be good for us to just reexamine our compensation policy in general, and I think a lot of employees are expecting us to do that. And I think a really important step in that process, a really important first step even, would just be for us to formally meet with employees. Not just with unions or anything like that, but just actually, I think Commissioner Turner even suggested some commission-led staff meetings or whatnot, so that we can actually hear, not just from the department heads, but actually hear from lower-level employees what their concerns are, what they feel, maybe discrepancies in our compensation policy or things they'd like to see addressed or whatnot, just so that we can... Get that dialogue started. Yeah. So, and I think, are we in agreement? That's a good first, that's a good first step, is to hear from, hear from employees.
Wouldn't you, Commissioner, head and say?
It's a great first step.
So, can we, and we've said we want to do that for a while now, but can we actually, can we really, can we do it? Can we set that up? Whether or not that means maybe turning over one of our third, I don't know when the best time to do that would be for employees, but I suspect it might be one of our 12:30, third Monday, third Monday meetings. We might even need to have a couple.
Well, you got four. You there, right? Says that's, want to do that?
No, I'm sorry. My, I had a question.
Okay. Question. Go ahead, Commissioner May.
Oh, okay. Now, 12:30 would, might cause problems for certain staffing situations. I just was throwing that out, so I don't know for where it would...
We could, we could do it similar to the way we did the garbage forums, where we have a, have a couple of meetings. I would even be open to as many. I mean, I'm happy to work as hard as you all, as you all want to work, but where we have more than one meeting, so the folks who can't make it to one can make it to another. We can maybe do one on a 12:30 Monday. We can maybe do another one then on a...
Saturday.
On a Saturday or something. I'd be, I'd be pretty open to that. On a Saturday or something. I'd be, I'd be pretty open to that. And formally invite any, any staff who want to come and, and voice their concerns. Start getting that set up. Do we want to set a time for...
Would you want different venues? Would you want these, we have, we have 315 active employees, I think. Depends on what they use, take the picture. But, so they're, theoretically might need a room larger than this.
I suspect we would.
So, was think through some of those logistical things.
Y'all want, any bad, just want to comment other than Commissioner Wilder on that?
Thank you. That's all my old business.
Okay.
Mayor, can I?
Commissioner May.
Just one thing, just, just as a point of, just historical reference, the signings of downtown, there was a lot of discussion on that years ago, where a lot of signs were taken out of downtown to, to try to make it less sign, a lot of sign clutter was taken out. That was in conjunction with downtown Frankfurt Incorporated tourism, historic-minded folks that wanted to try to keep a lot of the sign clutter out. So it was at the suggestion of some of the folks from these organizations back then, that signs be taken out of downtown Frankfurt. And we went back and removed every other two-hour parking sign on, in some places, and some other signs that didn't need to be there were, were taken down. So just, it, it, the transition of, when leadership changes in different organizations, sometimes the priorities come around to full circle, back to where we, where we, where we were in some cases. Just a historical perspective.
Well, we move on. As we move forward on, you took your scent and things of this nature, I'll make, I will, some more observations later, but just move on to new business. Commissioner DeGong, 10.1.
10.1 is a matter of new business and Mr. Darren Rainbow is here to discuss it. I think he's distributed a handout to back up his presentation.
You have some color handouts. I also have with me this evening, Mr. Michael Griffin. He's with the, he came from Louisville. He's with the U.S. Geological Survey. And they're a very big partner in this project, something that's really been building since the, even before the May 2010 flood. But one weakness that every community has, ours included, is being able to let citizens know when they're going to flood. We can give them river levels. We can provide charts and graphs and recordings, but if you're new to the area, that number doesn't mean much to you. If you live in South Frankfurt and I'll tell you 38 feet, you may not know what that means. This new project proposed by the USGS, and actually we partnered with the State Division of Water, city and county planning directors have attended the meetings. This project will help them as well. And Department of Local Government and the National Weather Service, all partners in this, in this river forecasting and flooding inundation study. And I won't get into the technical part, mainly because I don't know all of the technical part. That's what Mr. Griffin's here for. But one of the, the biggest benefits I see of this, and it's a photo in your handout, it shows the ability of citizens to, to log on even to a website or to call our emergency operations center. And we can give them the data and say, hey, I live at X address or this street. The rivers may be forecast to go 10 feet more than it is now. Will that affect me? And before it was really guesswork. We would say, eh, at 42 feet, sometimes it gets on to Fourth Street or whatever. Now they can actually look at a layer, a map, and see exactly, not only if that area is going to be affected, but even for planning purposes, how deep the water will be in that area at a given point. So, so it's a wonderful project. You'll see in your notes that the project we're talking about is a seven-mile stretch of the Kentucky River to be surveyed. It is a mile upstream from the city and a mile downstream of the city and all five miles of the city's banks. It includes all, really all of the big populated areas of the Kentucky River and all the bridges. The total project cost is $110,000 because this would be a pilot project.
Correct, Mike.
USGS has agreed to put up 50% of that as a match, 55,000. The Department of Local Government, through their flood grant program, has agreed to put up 50% of our local 50% match, 27.5. And the county judge has agreed to take it to physical court as well to split again that cost with the city, making our end cost 13,750 city, 13,750 county to finish the project. You know, if you have questions, I'll, Mike, come up and explain it in detail. I'm not that person, but it's a great thing. It's, it's really, once it's set up, it will be administered on the USGS's website. People can log on from anywhere during a disaster. If they don't have access, they can call us. We always maintain a 24-hour number and we can look it up for them and give them that data. So, and that's just a little piece of it. I know, I know Gary has some, some benefit to your department as well, correct? Same with the county, planning and zoning. You know, I just, I know that one piece.
Okay, Commissioner Wilder?
If we can really get this done for less than $14,000, I think that's a lot of bang for our buck.
Yeah, correct, correct.
Maybe quite a benefit. You mentioned it's a pilot project?
It is. He knows.
What's the, what's the end game?
I would call it a pilot project. What I'm calling it is, I guess, it's the first one in Kentucky. Now, the USGS has done this nationwide. We've done it in about 20 communities in the Midwest. This is the first one that'll be done in Kentucky. So that's kind of where the word pilot came from. Since USGS wants to do this on a national scale, we're going in and finding, we thought Frankfurt would be the perfect location for the first community in Kentucky to do it. We're not going to be able to throw 50% at every community. We may not even be able to throw funding in anymore after this one, but we wanted to get one off the ground. Frankfurt's going to continue to have flooding. As you know in there, there's charts that shows where your floods have been. That's not going to go away. This isn't going to stop flooding. This is going to help the citizens understand probably more on a local level what the flooding is, how it's going to affect them.
Sure.
So, we're doing it. We're doing it nationwide. It's just, so it's not a pilot study as far as that. It's just the first in Kentucky.
Sure, understood. I think it's a good opportunity for us to set a good example for the rest of the state.
Another comment? I've got a motion for Commissioner Turner and a second from Commissioner May. Please hold on.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Hedy?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes, thanks.
Yes, so 10.1 is adopted. All right, the next item on the agenda is closed session. Do I give a motion to...
I had a couple, I had a couple more pieces of new business.
Let me get the motion. If I get the motion, we have discussion.
Oh, well, I wasn't discussing personnel. I had some other new business.
Pardon me?
I had some other new business.
Oh, no, okay, okay.
I'd say we'd rather get that out of the way before we... It is just a really, first, it's just a really quick question. Somebody from the Maine Society asked if we, the city, have a hand in setting the price for dog licenses, for dog licensing? Do you mind knowing the answer to that question?
It's in the ordinance.
We do, we do set the price.
Yes.
I'm sure, I'm sure I'll come back with some more discussion on that later. But thanks. I, well, I guess I, you know, I guess to bring this up, I got a phone call from one of our constables today who was, who was pretty unhappy that he was, I guess, denied access to a warrant earlier today. Is it my understanding that it is our policy to share that kind of information with other law enforcement personnel?
What time did you talk to him?
Oh, 4:00-ish.
I talked to him at 4:30 and I think we got it squared away.
Okay. And so, and so that means...
He got his information.
Okay, and it is our continued policy to, to share that information?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I've got.
In Willie Mills' business. Okay, we have next on the agenda, the, the closed session. We've got to get a motion. Commissioner May?
We're going to close session for 61810 sub 1 sub F for personnel.
You get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Turner's second? Okay, hold on.
Commissioner Wilder?
Yes.
Commissioner Hedy?
Yes?
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Mayor Graham?